Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamontina. Counselor Linehan.
Here.
Counselor McCarthy.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Here.
Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancy. And Counselor Zakeham. Mr. President, we have...
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all Counselors' guests to please rise, and I will ask Counselor O'Malley to come to the podium to introduce today's clergy. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask all members and guests to remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, colleagues. It is my great and distinct honor today to welcome Reverend Linda Woodboyle, who will offer our opening prayer. Reverend Boyle is the new Executive Director of Project Hope, an organization I know all of us know well and am proud to be affiliated with. It was my former and now future marathon team. And many of you were with us as we celebrated the legendary Sister Margaret Leonard, who founded the organization for more than 30 years, served, and Mayor Walsh was kind enough to dedicate a street in her honor last, I guess it was last fall or last winter. Certainly, she leaves big shoes to fill, and Linda Woodboyle will more than exceed that. She's got a lifetime of career working with homeless families, working with youth. Most recently, she was the Executive Director of Homestar, a program I know many of you have worked with as well. She's just an amazing woman. She's a resident of the Clampoint section of Dorchester in Counselor Baker's district. And I invite you to listen to her words. And then again, I know she's open and welcoming to bringing any of us to Project Hope to meet some of the success stories toward the facility and see ways that we can continue to partner. So please join me in welcoming Reverend Linda Woodboyle. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. May we be in the spirit of prayer. Gracious and loving God, we ask for your presence in this room on this day. As you anointed leaders and called prophets of old, lead us to recognize our true representatives and authentic leaders, men and women who love your people and can walk with them, who feel their pain and share their joys, who dream their dreams and strive to accompany them on their common goal. Bless this gathering, and with your spirit embolden them to serve your people and to bring real glory to your name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Linda Woodboyle, for your inspiring message and prayer. Counselor O'Malley?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, on which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley, and thank you, Reverend Linda Woodboyle. And Madam Clerk, could you please recognize that Counselor Lamontina and Counselor Yancy are present? At this time, I would like to ask that the principals of the current paper, Dave Roberts and Jen Tracy, if you would make your way up to the deus. And I'd like to ask Josh Zakeham to join me also. We're here to recognize and celebrate the 20-year anniversary of the Boston Back Bay Current. And I want to give Counselor Zakeham an opportunity to say a few words first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for letting me join with you and recognizing this great institution that covers many of the neighborhoods that I represent in District 8. Dave and Jen have been integral parts of this community for a very long time and are certainly people not only do I see around at every community meeting, social, community gathering, whether it's social, whether it's civic association or other sort of meeting, very fierce advocates for our neighborhoods, which is something I'm grateful for, which only, I think, makes my job easier in that of many of the Civic Association members we work with. And it's an honor to wish you congratulations on a 20-successful year.
Thank you, Counselor Zakeham. And if you're fortunate to have Dave Jacobs and Jen in your district and many of the, if their circulation goes across much of the downtown neighborhoods of Boston, which Josh and I represent most of them and all of you at large do also, you realize what a significant job. And every week, there's a quality paper that goes out and addresses the topics of these neighborhoods that some people think are disparate, but a particular publication like this keeps all the downtown neighborhoods informed of what's going on and also about what we do as municipal elected officials. So I want to congratulate them and thank them for all they've done in support of the members of the council and I specifically. You did endorse me last time, right?
Yes.
Josh?
No.
No! All right, maybe you should read this.
I'm working on it for next time.
Step in. That's beautiful. All right, so we have a resolution. Do you want to say a few words before we present the resolution?
Oh, we'll do it after.
Okay, we'll do it after.
Because I will be announcing the coup taking over as President of the Civic Association.
A resolution of the Boston City Council President and Counselor Josh Zakeham. Whereas the Boston City Council extends their thank you and congratulations to Dave Jacobs and Jen Tracy of the Boston Current for their 20 years of publishing. And whereas the Boston Current has been keeping the citizens of Boston's downtown neighborhoods, the Back Bay, Beacon Hill, Fenway, South End, and Seaport District, as well as Bay Village, up to date and informed for 20 years, Dave Jacobs and Jen Tracy, owners and publisher of the Boston Current, are committed to informing the residents of business of issues affecting their daily lives on a weekly basis. And Josh, I'll let you finish right here. In hopes of good things to come?
Whereas the Boston Current, Dave Jacobs and Jen Tracy's dedication to the downtown neighborhoods of Boston has been unwavering for their years of service, the Boston Current is currently the largest weekly circulation in Boston. The Boston City Council commends you on your success, contribution, and dedication to the 20 years of service to the citizens of Boston. Therefore, be it resolved that the Boston City Council and meeting assembled does hereby wholeheartedly congratulate and thank Dave Jacobs and Jen Tracy for their many years of dedication and commitment to journalism.
You can all relax. I'm going to be very, very brief. My wife keeps telling me that the less I speak, the higher the probability that you're going to think that I'm intelligent as opposed to stupid. My poor wife was with me 23 hours a day, but she's smart enough to know when to turn off her hearing aid. We've been doing this for 20 years. Oh, my God. And just watching the evolution of the Boston City Council over that time. And as I look around today, it's much more reflective of what the neighborhoods of Boston are all about. And one of the things that has amazed me is as opposed to 20 years ago, 15, 10 years ago, you all seem to work in harmony. I thought you were bluffing it very well. Counselor President Linehan, you're running a very smooth operation as did your predecessor, Steve Murphy. I don't know if you're putting Valium in the water or what have you. You're hardly at the point where you're sitting around a campfire singing kumbaya to each other, but at least there is an open, honest, and intellectual discussion of the issues as opposed to what it was like 20 years ago, where discussions were based more on personalities than anything else. We've grown. I've seen the City Council grow and evolve over that time. It has really been a pleasure covering you all. Who did you laugh at my jokes? By the way, this is an endorsement year, I believe. Remember our motto, "We can't be bought, only leased", for political endorsements.
This is on TV, you know.
As it should be. Like Donald Trump, the ratings will go up.
Okay.
I'm a legend in my own mind. Seriously, though, I want to thank this body for the recognition of it. It's been so much fun publishing a weekly newspaper. As Mayor Menino told me very early on, people who are engaged in their community, the people who vote, read their neighborhood newspapers. That we, not just the Quran, but all of the other weekly newspapers in the city of Boston hopefully serve a very vital function to let those interested in their neighborhoods know what is really going on. On behalf of my wife and I, we sincerely say thank you very, very much for this honor.
Come on, everyone. Come right up front here.
You have a dress code? Everyone wears it?
Yes. That's...
You wear your...
Okay, good. Why don't you hold this up for someone? There you go. Are we all here?
Yeah, the endorsement editorial is getting longer and longer.
Great. All right, yeah, congratulations and thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
No, no. I'll pledge allegiance. No, no, absolutely. Could all of you, please, Kerry would like to take a picture because today, as you all dutifully did, you all wore pink to recognize that today is Breast Awareness Week here in today and this week here in the city of Boston. So Kerry wanted to take a photograph of all of us down here. So, Madam Clerk, where is Kerry? You what? Yeah, he did. He wants us here. I don't know exactly where, but there he is. Down the bottom. Okay. Run to the front. Come on.
But he's gonna say it, Frank.
I'm up front already.
Box second. And a panda taking second.
Which of us gets to...
Filing out. It's a keep filing out hours.
Well, thank you all for participating and thanks for the Current for being here today so we can recognize them. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand approved. Seeing, hearing, no objections, the minutes are so approved. Reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, please. I already introduced you.
Two, three. Communication was received from the Department of Environment and Energy in open space regarding urgency generator power for telecommunications equipment at 35 North Hampton Street.
A docket 1623 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, man is recently hurt for possible action. Please.
Docket number 1299, ordered to discuss granting solar personal rapid transit, permission to construct, operate, repair, and maintain in the city of Boston.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Environment and Parks, Counselor O'Malley on docket 1299.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We had a hearing on Monday on docket number 1299. This was sponsored by City Council at Large, Stephen Murphy. He may want to speak on it. Right now, we're asking that it remains in committee. Thank you.
A docket 1299 will remain in the Committee on Environment and Parks. Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Madam Clerk? Oh, did you?
No, yes.
Well, not yet. It won't. It won't be in the Committee on Environment and Parks just yet. Counselor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Counselor O'Malley for holding a quick hearing on this docket 1299, which would develop a solar-powered personal rapid transit service, augmenting our MBTA service and reducing clogged traffic in the city. We had a hearing on it. There is a Senate Bill Number 1287, which as a first step in this process, has to get passed at the legislature. So at some point in time, we'll be moving a resolution to support Senate 1287 in its passage up at the State House. But basically, what we're seeking to do, and we have the administration represented by Chris Cook, the Chief of Streets, as well as others here, is to get a pilot program of a monorail that is solar powered that is going to travel between North and South Station. And it is privately funded and privately operated so that there would be no additional debt on the taxpayers of the Commonwealth or the taxpayers of Boston as we're fighting to, I guess, close in the loop between North and South Station. And there are other potential neighborhood sites where this could work as well. But we're going to roll it out slowly. The first step would be supporting Senate Bill 1287 at the State House. I want to thank once again Counselor O'Malley and my colleagues for attending and having their input in the hearing. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Docket 1299 will remain in the Committee on Environment and Parks.
Docket Number 1408, Message and Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expend a Grant of $350,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to the Massachusetts Office of Coastal Zone Management to be administered by the City of Boston's Environment Department.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Environment and Parks, Counselor O'Malley on docket 1408.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also on Monday, the Committee on Environment and Parks held a hearing on docket number 1408, which, as you said, is a message and order authorizing the city to accept and expend a grant of $350,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to the Mass Office of Coastal Zone Management to be administered by the City of Boston's Environment Department. This grant would be primarily used to hire a consultant to conduct a climate vulnerability assessment as well as to contribute measures of decreasing the vulnerability of the city's infrastructure during a natural weather event. We have all seen the images coming out of South Carolina last week. We were all, many of us were here during Superstorm Sandy, certainly during the record-setting breaking and I hope remaining winter of last year. Climate change is real. Climate change is a great, great, grave threat that we face as a city. So I appreciate this opportunity to accept a grant of about $350,000 that will identify areas where we can better prepare ourselves for some cataclysmic, chlamydia storm. As I said, this is a $350,000 grant, which will essentially fund an assessment. It will also be used for things without getting any specifics because Carl Spector wouldn't ahead of the point. But this could be something as simple as building a sea wall in East Boston, making sure there were ample sun pubs for a city and private dwellings in parts of the city. So I urge quick action today and urge passage of this docket to allow for access of funds for a very, very, very important issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1408, although in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1408 has passed.
Docket Number 1296, Ordinance Establishing Procedures for the Safe Disposal of Needles, Syringes, and Lancets in the City of Boston.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty on docket 1296.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a great hearing yesterday. It was well-attended by Representatives of the Boston Public Health Commission, Boston Police Department EMS, as well as we had a great testimony from a resident and taxpayer who has first-line, frontline experience with this particular issue. So on behalf of both of my colleagues, Counselor Murphy and Counselor McCarthy, who co-sponsored it and will defer to them for additional comments, we've asked that it remain in the Government Operations Committee in an effort to work with the mayor's office and his representatives to try to make this and to expand upon the program that he has and also to incorporate some of the great ideas that were put forth yesterday at yesterday's hearing. So with that, I'll defer through the chair to the makers. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Counselor Flaherty for convening a speedy hearing on this matter. What we learned yesterday, Mr. President, is that the Public Health Commission has a new program with two employees riding together, picking up syringes that are found in parks, playgrounds, et cetera, public land across the city. We had some questions about whether or not two employees were enough and whether or not a call would come in through the new 311 line or to 911. We were trying to do this by ordinance. It wasn't ordinance. That's why it's in government operations. But what we came away with was at least keeping it in government ops to have working sessions to start an awareness campaign in Boston through the City Council for residents and for city and community groups for the safest procedures when someone comes across a needle, increase the number of drop-off boxes around the city at fire stations, EMS sites, police stations, hospitals, and maybe even pharmacies that sell needles, work with hospitals and pharmacies to explain to patients how to dispose of needles properly, and the understanding that there is an unpredictability of needle users, frankly. And it's a difficult regulation to enforce. So we're going to continue our discussions with the city administration and with the stakeholders, come up with something that makes our parks and playgrounds safer and works for all of Boston's residents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you, Counselor Murphy, for co-sponsoring this together. Couple weeks ago, we had a hearing on the education of Boston Public Schools and all school age children about the education of what a needle was and how we're going to promote and make sure that these kids in the future are picking them up, these discarded needles. Yesterday, we were talking about the protocol of how the city reacts to a found needle. But it was also a very big learning experience. I know for me, I opened up the hearing by asking a question, which I thought was, everybody knew except me, that you could buy a needle at CVS or the pharmacy. I did not know that. You don't need a prescription. You can go in. In fact, while we were here, I looked it up online and you can buy 10 for $2.10 on Amazon. So this, there's a lot more issues that came out as we started to filter this through talking with the public health as well as Chief Houli, who is here. So I'm really looking forward to the working session as we tie in the educational component to protect our children and as we continue forth with this as the protocol of the city of Boston. And clearly, as Counselor Murphy and Counselor Flaherty both alluded to, we've picked up 5,000 needles this year. And that's an awful lot. Counselor Lamontina had somebody that was stuck just the other day when cleaning leaves at the bocce court. So this is something that we've allowed since 2006. We changed the law that you could buy needles at CVS and Walgreens to protect the users from passing on diseases. And yet, it's now coming back. We're not protected of the people who are not using, our children and our people in the park. So this is going to be a very interesting topic as we go down the line and looking forward to a working session. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Lamontina?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the makers of the hearing yesterday because it was a very good hearing. Monday night, one of my constituents did get pricked by a needle cleaning leaves in a park at the bocce court. Spent the night at the Mass General Hospital and now he's on all these medication he has to take an HIV test in a month. But I want to commend the administration because I did go on 311 and put the complaint there. The Parks Department went out there yesterday. They cleaned the park because I was concerned that if there was one needle, there might be more needles at Langone Park. So they, on overtime because it was late, they cleaned the park. And Captain Fong, I had a conversation with him yesterday about my concerns of the park. And they actually made an arrest yesterday for someone doing drugs while they were out there. So I want to take this time just to thank the administration and just urge those who are watching to use that 311. Take a picture, use it. And I even got a response last night. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Lamontina. A docket 1296 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket Number 0568, Order Regarding a Text Amendment for Boston zoning code medical marijuana treatment centers.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Economic Development and Planning and Labor, Counselor Lamontina on 0468.
Thank you, Mr. President.
0568, excuse me.
Yesterday afternoon, we had a hearing on docket Number 0568 with Public Health, BRA, and the administration. It will remain in the committee, but I know the maker would like to discuss the hearing. Thank you. Michael Flaherty, Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Counselor Lamontina. Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to the Chair, Counselor Lamontina, for hosting the hearing yesterday. We heard some great testimony from the Boston Public Health Commission as well as... We heard some great testimony from the Boston Public Health Commission, as well as former member of the City Council, Rosemary Sansone, representing the Business District. And pretty straightforward, we got some great input from colleagues. So we're asking that it stay in committee so we can work with the administration and adopt some of the ideas that were put forth by Counsel Baker and Counsel O'Malley yesterday. And it's pretty straightforward stuff, but we understand the reality around medicinal marijuana dispensaries. We can also expect, forecast that in the very near future, either by ballot or by an initiative, by colleagues in government up at Beacon Hill, recreational marijuana will soon follow and will be a reality. And this is just really a common sense solution to make sure that we're protecting neighborhoods from the marijuana, recreational marijuana saturation that will ensue. It will be an absolute frenzy, and we'll see neighborhood business districts overturned and overrun by cannabis cafes and pot shops. So we like our coffee shops, we like our dry cleaners, we like our bakeries, and clearly we'll have to make it a combination here. And so what this text amendment does, it basically says that no facility, either medicinal or recreational marijuana, can be located within 2,500 feet of a medicinal marijuana facility. So it kind of gives us an opportunity to create some safeguards for residents so that no one neighborhood should have to bear the burden that will ensue once recreational marijuana becomes a reality. And in fact, I argue, and I know Counsel O'Malley had made some great points about the need for medicinal marijuana, and I concur with those, but I also feel like there's a percentage of folks who probably now have these medicinal cards that really don't have a debilitating ailment, and that's sort of their way to be able to possess and to carry the stuff. And I think what's going to happen, and we'll see, is once recreational marijuana becomes a reality, instantly thousands of people will be cured of those nagging injuries, and they'll rip up those medicinal cards and they'll go the recreational route. And I just want to make sure that our neighborhoods, every single neighborhood of Boston, the neighborhoods that my district colleague represents, are protected from what will be a frenzy and an oversaturation. This will be the answer and the solution to protect that community. So that said, we'd like to work together, take in some, incorporate some of the ideas from colleagues like Counsel Baker and Counsel O'Malley, who raised them yesterday, along with Counsel Lamatina, and put together a product that the mayor and his team will be able to support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Baker?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just rise to commend the maker of this here. I think as a city council, I urge everybody to really pay attention to this issue, because the issue that I see coming down the pipeline for us will be if recreational goes through, which it probably will, we need to make sure that our neighborhoods are protected, because if it's just a retail, retail use, we all have retail in our district. So we live through the hoops that had to be, had to be jumped through for the medicinal, for the medicinal operations. I fear that if we don't get a hold on this, and I again thank the maker for this, to make sure that we're on the front end of this and don't have to go through, and I don't have experience of what Colorado is going through. I've seen programs of whole streets just turning into just basically pot shops, but that would be very disconcerting for me if it happened, if a whole street in my district turned over. So again, I think this is good work by the city council here, and if we can, and if we can have some protections on the front end, and we're not scrambling like the way we were for medicinal, I just think it's good work by the city council here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Counsel Jackson?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise to compliment the maker on this. We don't have to actually look to Denver to see what this looks like. We can look to Counsel Baker's district and part of your district in the New Market area to look at what the high concentration of services, healthcare services, or other types of services in one place actually does to a neighborhood and a community. And so I think this legislation also, to me, would be some great test legislation to look at the ability for the City of Boston to work with the state of Massachusetts to determine where methadone clinics and other types of clinics actually go in the City of Boston. Having three or four in a five-block radius has been to the detriment of many of the communities that you and I share, as well as Counsel Baker shares. And so I think this legislation, proactive legislation, before we, before any laws actually change on a recreational level, puts the council in a situation where we're actually leading and not following the legislation. So I want to compliment you on that and really look forward to tracking it, because hopefully we could use this same rationale to deal with other types of regulated substances in the, in the state of Massachusetts than the City of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Docket 0568 will remain in the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor.
Docket number 0274, Order for Hearing to Discuss Recruiting and Retaining Educators of Color Within the Boston Public Schools.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Education, Counsel Jackson.
Mr. Chair, I also want to acknowledge the work that Counsel Presley has been doing in these hearings. These, this has been a really great ongoing conversation with the now-new folks in the Tommy Chang superintendency, and the look is at the pipeline that the Boston Public Schools is building to continue to have a workforce that is a reflection of the young people who are in the schools. There are some encouraging programs that are happening in the system with actually some really good results. One of the programs is actually taking people who are paraprofessionals and giving them additional training, and actually sending them through a program at UMass that has now been discounted to about $8,000. So there are people who are actually becoming teachers, who are already in the classroom, not as a teacher, and elevating 35 members out of 108 people who apply. We really looked at how the Boston Public Schools can be its own best recruitment mechanism in itself. In addition, we've seen a larger spread relative to where the recruitment has actually been occurring. We know that the, most of the schools in Massachusetts don't really have diverse populations in their Masters in Education programs, and so there's a lot that's going on in that space. There's an October 1 to October 1 analysis that occurs. Much of that analysis was not able to get done, and we look forward to having one, another meeting in about a month. But it has been a very robust and good conversation about what we can do to make sure that we close the achievement gap, and that's what the real, the real goal. This is not only about who we hire in the classrooms, but the objective is those people that we hire in these classrooms, in terms of their cultural competencies, as well as their abilities, will help close the achievement gap and make Boston the best public school education, large urban public school education in the country. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Counsel Presley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank the Chair of Education, Counsel Jackson, for his leadership and due diligence in this space, for staying the course. You know, as he referenced, this is not just about having a teaching force that reflects the population of students in our city, just for the sake of, you know, I think there is a direct correlation that can be drawn with our black and brown boys, who have been in the bottom of every educational outcome, and the need for us to have a teaching force that, where they see themselves reflected. That's one of the issues also that in our working sessions, we've continued to highlight, that it's not just about recruiting and retaining educators of color, but also acknowledging there is a male teacher shortage and how everyone stands to benefit from that. So, you know, gender, racial parity within the classroom is critical. And also, one of the things that came out of the working session, thanks to Counsel Jackson's diligence in this space, is we learned that more mature teachers and teachers of color were disproportionately being, you know, impacted by teacher evaluation and other, and other efforts. So again, I just commend the Chair and thank him for his leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Counsel Yancey?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I too like to commend the Chair of the Education Committee. The issue of diversity in our classrooms is far more significant today than it was when Judge Garrity issued his ruling. Today, the students of color represent more than 85% of the total population, and I believe we're facing a serious crisis in terms of the apparent decline of the proportion of teachers of color in our classroom due in part because of the high number of retirements hitting the school department at this time. So again, I just rise to commend the Chair and thank him for focusing attention on this very important issue, because it does have an impact, as was mentioned, on the achievements of students of color who, like all other students, identify with their teaching staff of all races. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Yancey. Docket 0274 will remain in the Committee on Education. Motion, orders, and resolutions, Madam Clerk, please.
Do you recognize?
Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
I actually just did want to acknowledge our staff, Corinne, who stayed till 8:30 last night to staff us. So I just think, I just wanted to take the time to thank her for her hard work and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Madam Clerk, motions, orders, and resolutions, please.
Docket number 1624, Counsel Zachem offers the following order for hearing to review the results of the 2015 Fenway parking ordinance.
Chair recognizes Counsel Zachem on docket 1624.
Thank you, Ms. I introduced this hearing order to review the results of the pilot program that this body enacted unanimously and that the mayor signed earlier this year to protect residents of the Fenway, Kenmore, and Audubon Circle neighborhoods from the 30,000 or 40,000 people who come in, not only for the '81 Red Sox home games a year, unfortunately, I think that's as many as we're getting this year, but obviously in better years, more home games, but also concerts, events, road races. During Fenway events, historically, with the citywide resident parking violation fine being only $40, and lots around Fenway regularly being $50, $55, or $60, people were just sort of rolling the dice and taking residence spaces. Anecdotally, this has been a very successful program. We've received emails from the very beginning when this started, and periodically sends and calls from Fenway residents that they can find parking on occasion. From communication with the Transportation Department, it seems like not only this program paying for itself, it's really altering behavior, which was really the goal for this. So I would look forward to having this hearing to hear from VTD, from Fenway residents, from Red Sox officials and others, whether this program has been as efficient and successful as I believe it is, and then how to move forward in making sure this continues into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Counsel Flaherty?
Thank you, Mr. President. Rise to have my name added, and it's obviously very important data that we've asked through that pilot program and getting that data, and then it potentially could impact, what I agree with probably Counsel Lamatina's district with respect to improvements in South Lake Stadium. So we sort of carved out the Fenway as sort of a trial, a balloon, if you will, with the pilot program, working with Counsel Zachem and the Transportation Department, and so eagerly await that data, so if I could add my name onto it. And then that conversation may expand pretty quickly to impact other districts, particularly probably Counsel Lamatina's district. So I would want to make sure that Counsel Lamatina is in tune with what's happening and whether or not it would make a difference, and it also potentially could play into things that he's been talking about since he's joined the body with respect to expanding the meter times, like other major cities. So right now, we're 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. He's made significant in proven documents around expanding that to 9:00, 10:00, 11:00, maybe even midnight. So, and that also could play a role into what's happening over the Fenway and Counsel Zachem's district. So it's a, could be a multi-district type of scenario here, but that's important data, so I look forward to getting it and having an expedited hearing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Please add Counsel Flaherty's name to that, Counsel Jackson's name, Counsel, Counsel McCarthy's name, Counsel Murphy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Presley, Counsel Wool, Counsel Yancey, and Counsel Lamatina, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take this opportunity to commend Counsel Zachem on this trial. I'm looking forward to the findings, because as Counsel Flaherty did say, we might be interested in expanding that around the station area, the north end, particularly in the north end, probably the west end, maybe, and your district itself, because there's a problem during the games. We see it all over neighborhoods, cars are parked everywhere, some of them illegally. So I want to commend the maker, and please add my name.
Thank you, Counsel Lamatina. Please add Counsel Lamatina's name, and please add my name. Docket 1624 is assigned to the Committee on City, Neighborhood Services, and Veterans I'm informed by the clerk that there are three late-file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to today's agenda. Hearing objections, the matters are so added, the clerk will read the first late-file matter.
On October 7, 2015, Counsel Villanueva, for Counselor O'Malley, ordered-
Counsel O'Malley moves suspension of rules and passage of the first late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The first late-file matter has passed.
From the Office of Mayor Martin J. Walsh, October 7, 2015, to the City Council. Dear Councils, I transmit herewith for your approval a homeroom petition to the General Court entitled, "An Act Relative to the Quota of Number of Alcohol Beverages Licenses Granted by the Licensing Board of the City of Boston." And I'll just read the last paragraph.
Yes.
A technicality in Chapter 287 of the Acts of 2014, however, prevented the City of Boston from receiving the five all-alcohol non-restricted transferable licenses per year, which is a total of 15, as approved and supported by the city and the Massachusetts Legislature. Therefore, this act provides a technical correction that will allow the city to attain the 15 licenses that the legislature intended for us to receive. I urge your honorable body to adopt this act expeditiously. Cecily Martin J. Walsh, Mayor of Boston.
Counsel Flaherty?
Thank you, Mr. President. Moving at this time for suspension and passage through you, if we could get some comments from Counsel Yana Presley, who's taken the lead on behalf of our body on this particular issue, but as the clerk has just eloquently stated, there was a technical glitch. This is really just simple housekeeping that will also safeguard the city and allow us to get these very much-needed licenses that this body through. Counsel Presley has fought for for a significant period of time. So thank you, Mr. President.
And no objections? Counsel Presley?
Thank you, Chairman Flaherty and President Villanueva. In 2014, with your support, we passed historic liver license reform that included 75 new licenses to Boston over three years. However, in the wee hours of the session when this was passed, there was a drafting error in the legislation, which prohibits Boston from accessing 15 of those licenses. Now, the House passed a supplemental bill that included the technical correction. Tomorrow, the Senate is prepared to take this up, but they need a homeroom petition to authorize the technical change. That is why the mayor and I are asking for your support in considering this late file now. Again, this is not a change to the law. It is simply correcting a drafting error. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Counsel Yancey?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to commend Counsel Presley and the Chair of Government Operations for bringing this before us for expeditious action, and I'm going to support suspension and pass it. I just have a question on this specific item that applies to the non-restricted transferable license. Through you, Mr. President, to, to the maker, how does this impact the likelihood of those communities that historically have not benefited from these licenses? This particular category of non-restricted licenses is what I'm concerned about.
I thank you, Counsel Yancey. Counsel Presley?
If I understand the question, Counsel Yancey, so the legislation was 75 licenses over three years, 25, 25, and 25, 80% of those restricted to Main Streets and neighborhoods that have historically been disenfranchised and marginalized. The remainder are all city licenses, and that is because, you know, we didn't name in the legislation Roxbury, Mattapan, and Dorchester, because there are neighborhoods like a Hyde Park, or Charlestown, or West Roxbury, who also stand to benefit from this legislation, who would rather have restaurants than banks on their main street. And that's why we didn't limit it, the legislation, to the sighting of just those neighborhoods, because there are other Main Streets and neighborhoods, although not historically disenfranchised per se, but who are suffering blight on their Main Streets. per se, but who are suffering blight on their Main Streets and could stand to be economically revitalized with a liquor license. So there's a public need in other neighborhoods, even when they have not been historically disenfranchised.
I thank you, Council Presley. Council Yancey?
Just a brief follow-up to the maker. Does that mean that these additional 15 licenses, I know they were included in the original legislation, but since we're discussing it, would they be limited to depressed, economically depressed areas? Or could they also be used to augment those areas which already have-
Just for clarification, the 15 are the ones that are citywide options. So they are available to anybody, anywhere in the city. It's the other 75 that are restricted.
No, I understood about the other 75, but my question remains, does this 15 in any way increase the likelihood, at least, of those individual license holders who historically have not participated in the holding of licenses in the past? In other words, can these 15 licenses be used by individuals who already have licenses? You know, can we create a situation where the rich are getting richer and that these additional 15 would be utilized by those who already hold lucrative licenses in fairly well-to-do areas? Or can they be used to further augment those areas of the city that may not be mentioned in the legislation but may be indeed blighted?
Yeah, I mean, it's my understanding that they're not restricted to those, from those areas, but are available across the city. Go ahead.
Yep.
So Council Yancey, again, you know, thanks to your support, this is legislation that was already passed by this body. So this is not legislative change. This is simply a technical change in the drafting of the legislation, which was already passed. And, you know, those were, those were the original numbers that passed this body. So it's 15 all-city. I would also add, knowing, Council Yancey, of your commitment to minority and women enterprise, that with these all-city licenses, the first cycle that we've already gone through, we have seen an increase in minority and women restaurant ownership, even in neighborhoods that have not historically been disenfranchised and marginalized. And I think that's important as well.
Thank you, Council Presley. Council of Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to stand in the way of this either. I just simply would say that it's almost ridiculous that we have to go back to the legislature to increase the number of licenses in the city of Boston, our city. And this is another overreach of homeroad and the process. And the other thing I would say about homeroad and the process is, if there was a technical glitch, it had to happen up there. And if it happened up there, it means they tinkered with the original bill, which they're not allowed to do. So which is it, legislature? Thank you.
Yeah, it is, just for clarification, is my understanding that the bill of that matter that was signed by the mayor did not restrict any change at the state level. Okay? Just for clarifying. Did you want to comment on that, Council Presley?
As I said earlier.
Okay.
And just for the purposes of the record, Council Yancey, so the legislation that ultimately was passed certainly was inspired and informed by our original blueprint and homeroad, but it is not the exact legislation that passed this body, so I did just want to offer that correction.
Right. Thank you, Council Presley. And that goes, just for, again, clarification, the homeroads specifically have to say in that particular homeroad that's voted on and that is signed by the mayor that it needs to stay pat, that it doesn't, cannot be changed. Or then, the state legislature has the opportunity to weigh in on the matter and make alterations or amendments. So Council of Flaherty moves suspension of the rules and passage of the second late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the second late-file matter has passed. Thank you all. Madam Clerk?
Third late file, from the Office of Mayor Martin J. Walsh, October 6, 2015. Dear Madam Clerk, please note that I will be out of town from 7:00 a.m. on Wednesday, October 7, until 4:00 p.m. on Thursday, October 8. Please let me know if you have any questions. Sincerely, Martin J. Walsh, Mayor of Boston.
I don't hear anything, though. That's good. That is real good. That matter will be placed on file. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets? Please do so at this time. I don't see any lights flashing, so we will move on. There are two late-file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing, hearing, no objection, the matters are so added. The Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. I'd ask all guests and all members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of the following individual. For I and Council of Flaherty, Max W. Adams, and Arthur G. Fritsch, who is Ellen's father, Astinor. For I, Council Wu, and Council of Flaherty, Tony Yi. For Councilors McCarty and Murphy, Paul McDonald. For Council O'Malley, Dr. James Mahoney. For Council Yancey, Jonathan T. Julian, Miles Hinton, and Ermine Riley. A moment of silence. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed, before we do that. For Council Sioma, Barbara J. Josoma, and John Jack McGlothlin. For Council Lamatina, Phyllis Bourgerie. For Council Lamatina and O'Malley, Susan Pickman. And for the Chair, Lucy Ann Farula. A moment of silence. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals and is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 21, at noon. All those in favor, say aye of adjournment. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the council is so adjourned.